Welcome to the November 21st Planning Board meeting. Today on the agenda, we have minutes, review minutes from November 7th. We will continue a special permit hearing for 17 Mackinac Terrace. We have two sign requests, one from Jed Thompson from 30 Main Street, and Destiny Mitchell from 26 Main Street. So let's start with the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Yes.
I'm delighted to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Nancy's not on Zoom. Okay, great. All right, so we are going to continue the special permit hearing for 17 Mackinac Terrace. I did check into the question that came up last, at the last meeting, and there is a little bit of a quirk in our LPOD by lot and in the R2. It is 10% building coverage of the entire lot, that's building footprint. And within the LPOD, it's 15% of impermeable surfaces, structures, and buildings. So they're sort of two different things there. So we had some questions at the last meeting that came up that David Cameron, is David here? Yes. Raised, and we heard back from Brian, from Cider, from Forsight, who is here. And I think David had some, thank you for sending that information, Brian. We appreciate it. And I think David had some follow-up questions to do with with that lot coverage within the LPOD.
Okay.
So the question that David had had to do with with the size of the deck and that bringing this over, over that 15% threshold. I'll let David, well, I'll let David, you know, speak.
I can just outline sort of the changes I made first.
That's fine. Yep, that's fine.
We had talked about clarifying what the dimensions were that we were giving our areas from. So I put those on this updated revised plan that I sent. And I also provided a table that shows basically the math. The reason for a lot of the changes is because initially we were scaling it off of an old survey drawing. We didn't perform a new survey for this project. I don't think it would be practical. But I went out to the site and actually took measurements to get a little more accurate dimensions of the house and the decks, and the garage particularly. So those have been updated slightly. It did not change our overall percentages within the LPOD or the lot much. And again, I think, I think our percentage of the building lot area is overestimated because we're including things like decks and the porch and things, the cantilever, which I don't think would technically count as the building coverage, but they're included just in case. So yeah, can you have any questions? Try to answer them.
Yeah, first of all, I'll just say the revised tables and the site plan with the detailed dimensions was really helpful. So thank you for doing that. It made reviewing this much easier. And I did do a detailed review of the materials and I, everything looked really good to me. I did find a couple of things. And maybe you can clarify it if I'm misreading the plans. One of the things, so the, the large portion of house plus the smaller portion, so that would be the eastern portion and then the western portion, plus the cantilevered second floor. I came up with the same exact number as you did, which is 1243 square feet, 1,243 square feet. The deck, we had slightly different dimensions, but we came up with the same exact square footage. So that, that cancels itself out at 50 square feet. The porch, if I'm reading the plans correctly, excuse me, the, the feature that you've got labeled porch is 12 and a half feet long by seven feet wide, not five and a half feet wide, unless I misconstrued something.
That's correct. And I thought I should have labeled that after the fact, but it's seven feet out from the first floor. So I didn't want to include the cantilevered section over it twice. So I subtracted two and a half feet.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, I, yeah, I think if we want to be fair, I think it's fair to include cantilevered structures, but we don't want to, we don't want to count them twice. We don't want to count overlapping things. We want to, I think the way this, this should be done, and the planning board can correct me if my methodology understanding is incorrect, but we should be looking at things from a plan view and looking down and figuring out, excuse me, recovering from both, what, what the square footage is of the overall footprint. And if there's an overlapping footprint, we don't want to count it twice. So that's, that's a fair response to that. It didn't end up making a big difference anyway. I came up with 88 square feet and you guys had 69 square feet. So it's 21 square feet. So that would go back down to 69 square feet. There were three features on there that you guys did not include. And maybe we can have a conversation about that. And those three features are the stone patio out behind the house, on the lacquered side of the house, the walkway that extends from the driveway to the front door. And then there's a staircase on the northwestern corner of the house. I did my best to estimate the dimensions of those things. And I came up with, if you, if, if I'm reading the plans correctly and I understand them correctly, I came up, if you add those three features together, I came up with 475 square feet. But I'm interested to hear what, what you think about that.
Yep, I think your assessment of the area sounds correct. The reason I didn't include them when we typically don't for patios is because they're not, we don't consider them. And I checked with this Mark Volk in my office also. We never include the patios as impermeable surface because they're not really impeding the flow of water into the ground because it goes between the stones. It's not creating any sort of runoff channelization or, you know, stormwater. It's not creating a lesser area of absorption for the water because it's not being redirected elsewhere, which you'd have for, say, a roof that's going into a downsout and going to one location. So it's, it's going between the pet stones. It's not, it's able to percolate down through. So you don't, you never consider it impermeable, impermeable, rather. But I did do calculations with, I think, the staircase. You're talking about the staircase and the deck.
It comes off of the deck on the northwestern side of the house.
That's another thing I included. I don't typically include, it's an accessory to the deck. It's necessary for egress. It's just consistency wise, we don't include it. You don't include steps on all decks. Typically not something we do. So I guess that's not why it's not included.
Okay, I, so I, I understand, I think I understand your rationale. I think I'll take a shot at hopefully expressing accurately what the, what the planning board is trying to accomplish here, which is, let's just say you've got a raw piece of land that's in the LPOD. It's completely undisturbed. As soon as you start putting human-made features in that, you're displacing natural features, whether that's native plant species or wildlife habitat or undisturbed soils that can infiltrate stormwater in a natural way. Every time you put a, a human-created feature in that LPOD, it's taking away from the LPOD's natural ecological ability to provide those functions. So I, I don't know why a staircase that sticks off the side of the house would be any different than a bulkhead or a, you know, a sidewalk or a paved portion of a driveway. It's, it's a human-made feature that's displacing another what, what, what would be a natural environment. And I think that's, I, I don't think there's a dispute that a staircase would qualify as either a structure or a portion of a structure. That's my interpretation of it. I didn't, I wasn't the architect or the author of the, of the LPOD provisions, so I'd have to defer to the planning board on that. But that's just my interpretation of it. As far as the stone patio goes, I guess I would, I would compare that to, well, let's back up. If the stone patio was made explicitly to conform to some other town regulations that require infiltration and they were permitted under some other town deliberative process, I can see your point. But I think if you were to do, say this project was subject to the Massachusetts stormwater standards. I don't know, I don't know how much experience you have with that or doing the modeling or the HydroCAD work associated with that. But you've got what are called curve numbers. I don't, is that a concept you're familiar with or? I don't know if you're an engineer or landscape architect.
I'm a civil engineer. Yeah, familiar.
So, so I guess, what, what, what would the difference be to, between asphalt pavement and stone be for a curve number? What would you use? Would it be like 98?
Asphalt's up in the 98 range. A gravel driveway is typically lower, a lot lower. A patio closer to a gravel, gravel area, but it's also not compacted the same way.
But those, those stones are pretty much buttered right up against each other, right? With a tiny, tiny bit of interstitial space in between them, right? So for all intents and purposes. For all intents and purposes, it's pretty much impermeable, right? I, again, I didn't write the, I didn't write the bylaw. I'd have to defer to the planning board on how they interpret that. But that's just my, that's just my general impression.
The same point. Typically doing stormwater calculations, we wouldn't include small areas like that because they're ultimately not adding to the runoff from the site at the end of the calculations because they're minor. If it was a giant parking lot versus, you know, a walking path, there's a big difference there. But a walking path isn't going to necessarily change your runoff calculations off the site. So in the same way, including this, I guess I didn't calculate the for this, you know, change in stormwater runoff. It's not.
Well, I think the bylaws is clear. Section 6.5.9A limits the maximum lot coverage of building structures and impermeable surfaces to 15%.
Right.
So with including these surfaces, David, are we, where, are we at the threshold or above it? Or where are we now?
If you, if you, I'd have to subtract the 21 square feet for the overlapping cantilevered thing. So let me, let me just do a quick calculation. If we added those, if we added those three new features in that Forsight didn't include, bear with me one second. And we subtracted the 21 square feet for the overlapping cantilevered stuff, we would be at, again, this is, I estimated those other few features. That would be 2,048 square feet divided by 13,500 square feet of the portion of the lot that's within the LPOD, correct, Brian? And I agree with that number. I think that's the number you guys came up with.
Oh, we simplified it a bit to make it a rectangle. So yes.
Right, because the shoreline.
Original number because we simplified it to a rectangle rather than truly the polygon that it would be on site, but we didn't do a survey.
So what was, what was the original number, 13,900 or something like that?
900, yep. So we lowered it to 13.5.
So, so when you say, were you trying to reconcile that, the irregular shoreline?
Yeah, it's an irregular shoreline, which gives you a larger curvature. But in trying to simplify it to, to show it on the plan, I calculated it as a rectangle, so.
Okay, so if we, if we use 13,500 square feet and 2,048 is the existing developed, existing plus proposed developed LPOD, that brings us to 15.2%. If we go, if we take into consideration the irregular shoreline, just give me a second, bear with me. And we say the LPOD coverage is 13,000, was it 900?
Yes.
That brings us to 14.7. So we're like, we're dancing on one or either side of, of that threshold, depending on how we view this.
Okay, so is there any, in looking at that property, there's some erosion going on there. There's the wall, of course. And then I saw opportunities for improving the issue of stormwater runoff. Do you see any possibilities there, David? You know, based on your, your background for making things better?
Well, you know, I made, I made a point, I think, in my original letter that, and again, so the standard is that 35 feet of shoreline, native shoreline vegetation needs to be preserved if you're starting with a raw piece of land, right? We're not starting with a raw piece of land. But there's, there's an opportunity for improvement down there if the planning board wants to consider that. I, I, there's a narrow strip of shrubs, I think, right, that are growing almost on top of the retaining wall or maybe just behind the retaining wall. And then there's a really steep portion of the lawn. And then it, then it gets, you know, the slope is much more gradual as you head from the top of that bench back to the house. So there's this really steep portion that's right above the retaining wall that doesn't look like it's, I'm not sure if it gets used for much. I'm not sure how usable it actually is for, you know, active recreation or passive use. If the planning board wanted to discuss with the applicant opportunities for shoreline enhancement in the LPOD, that's something that, you know, might, might be a logical place to start.
Could I just address that very quickly? Alex Glover, I'm the, I'm the attorney representing the applicants. I, I appreciate David's comments. Hi, David, it's been a while. But I don't think that making, improving some other part of the lot a condition of adding a second floor, one post, one deck is, I don't think it's relevant to the deck. And it also, I don't think would be in the permissible scope of your special permit duties on this application. I know that Ruth and David would welcome a conversation about it. I know they would like to know what the planning board suggests or thinks about it because they care about the property. So I don't want to shut down that conversation, especially if we have David on the line, so he chips in. But I don't think it could be a part of this special permit.
Conservation Commission as well has reviewed and approved the RDA for the deck specifically, which is minor in its, I guess, effect on the area itself.
Any, any questions from the board?
The patio is already there and has been. Is that correct?
Yeah, the patio is there.
The patio is.
I'm not sure.
So you're not redoing the patio? You could make the stones further.
No, this is just permanent to the deck, one post in the grounds within the existing building footprint, more or less.
Yeah, I remember seeing it. And the water goes where it was going before into the rocks that are down below it. If, if you're putting tracks or whatever you're putting up there.
Which is it, Liz?
There's, so there are pebbles underneath where water would go down. When we saw it, that's where water would go from the roof or where, if it rained, that's where it went. So we were just wondering if the, and I think we might have addressed this last time. The water from, when it rains and, or snows or whatever, where does the water go now? Does it go over the side? Does it go in, back in the pebbles where it's always been going?
Well, I, I think there's no evidence that the water from the patio is, is causing any erosion or issues where it would, it's going away from the patio area. I think it's pretty permeable, especially the stone underneath the patio. As long as the lawn around it, it's, it's percolating through.
So you don't see it coming off like in one big swoosh on one side?
No.
It going through the.
Right, it's not channelizing in any, in any manner. And that's, that's why we don't typically include patios. That's impermeable surface, because.
Oh, it's not in your interest to include patios, Brian, but they're, you know, look, you got the 15%, but along with that comes structures, buildings, and impermeable surfaces.
Understood.
So, I mean, you have, you know, there was erosion on the south side of the property. And, you know, I respectfully disagree with the idea that, you know, you're, you're over, it sounds to me like you're over the 15%. And I, I do it.
Depends which number you use, though.
It depends under 15.
I think that's the case.
It depends if you use 13.9 or 13.5.
Yeah, we reduced our LPOD area because for the sake of simplifying it honestly, because we had, David would, wanted to see it represented. So we, instead of following the shoreline, which would give you a more curvature on your LPOD offset, essentially, we took it and said the lot is 90 feet wide. It's 150 feet. That's a rectangle. It's 13,500. So our original number we came up with was based on the irregular shoreline and the offset that would provide you, and we came up with the 13.9. So it's a significant difference, but we were in the interest of simplifying it.
Could you just explain quickly the scope of the project one more time for me?
The scope of the project is, is just this deck, which is, would be 11, 9 by 9 and 1/2 feet. It's 113 square feet.
With one post in the ground.
One 6 by 6 post. It's, it's a first story. It's on the first floor of the house, so it's connected on two sides. And it has the one post in the corner.
And is there nothing there now?
There's air conditioners and basically a garden bed, and that'll mostly stay the same. There's a Japanese maple, which is proposed to be trimmed in a left-of-place, so. There's no staircase. It's accessed only from a door to the first floor.
I guess we have to decide if we're at 14.7 or 15.2. Because if it's at 14.7.
Obviously, I'd have to go and do a survey to tell you.
And I'm looking at a 10 by 10 deck or so.
Fair to that, honestly.
Well, I think, you know, Barry, do you?
See a huge issue. I just don't.
Barry, do you have any, anyone else have any questions? No? Okay. Is there anyone here who, who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Okay.
And I, I'm sorry, I didn't speak soon enough. It's Ruth and David Epstein. We're the property owners. We bought the house in, it's June of 2021 and inherited everything that's there. I just want to reiterate what Alex said. We are certainly very open to a, a conversation about any preservation or improvement or diminution of erosion. I didn't want you to think we didn't care about those issues. I'll just leave it at that.
So are you, I mean, I heard Alex, but are you as the owners? I mean, this is a, a cost, a stormwater runoff affects the quality of the lake. There are enormous costs associated with, you know, the maintenance and preservation of the lake. And, and these are the impacts that contribute to problems in the lake. So I guess I would ask you, you know, first of all, welcome to, to Stockbridge and to the lake. Congratulations on your new property. But, you know, is, is this something that, you know, is, do you have enough interest? Everybody says, you know, they're interested in, in preservation and being an environmentalist and so on. But do you have enough interest to commit here to tonight to making, you know, meaningful improvements? And I don't think that they would be, you know, at, at much cost that would help improve the, the health of the lake.
So we're in a different, difficult situation because of the zoo. Because if Ruth and David were sitting here, I wouldn't interrupt. I would just say something to them. And, and Ruth and David, just to be clear, I think what Sheriff Fletcher is asking you is if you would agree to commit, meaning include something additional work that you would perform as part of a condition of a permit. And if I'm speaking, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but since we have to have this conversation to this extent in public, I, I wouldn't recommend that you add it at this stage to this permit. Although I certainly would encourage to get the information about the recommended work.
The specific project is this one-hand dug post, so I don't think it does have the impact. I mean, I would defer to Alex on whether there should be specific conditions. But I was agreeing with what she said before, which was that we were open to a conversation.
But not a condition of this permit.
Well, that is up to the board. So, you know.
It is.
So I guess if, if no one else has any questions, I'd like to... Any other questions? David, any comments?
Could I just make one more?
He has his hand up, please.
Yeah, the, the only comment I would make is the notion of supplemental shoreline plantings, I think, needs to be predicated on an exceedance of the 15% LPOD development. And it seems like we've got one number that's 14.7. We've got one that's 15.3. You know, I used, I used the 15.3. That was based on the rectangle that forced, the rectangular polygon that Forsight used to simplify my reading of the application, which I appreciate. Now, I didn't know that before. It's, there is an irregular shoreline there, and the shoreline actually juts in towards the property, which means the LPOD would, would be extended landward farther than what that 13,500 reflects. So my gut tells me that the 14.7 is probably the more accurate of those two numbers, based on the way Brian explained this. And if that's the case, that means they haven't exceeded the threshold. And then the planning board probably doesn't have strong grounds for requiring mitigation. If there's, I didn't see erosion laws out there, but perhaps I missed it. If there's an active erosional issue into Stockbridge Bowl, I mean, that's another matter. That, that potentially is a con-con matter or, or something else. If it's, you know, if it's specifically tied to some, some activity that's happening on the property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dave, I just reiterate, also, I did not notice heavy erosion. I know that it's, it's an area of steep grade where there's less grass, of course, but there's no sedimentation that I saw going down into the, the lake. And also in your letter, we agree, I think, that the, the deck itself doesn't cause much harm to the area because it's only a 6 by 6 post being placed in a, in an area that's already disturbed by a, a garden bed. And of course, we have erosion controls as well. I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, anything else? Nope? Okay.
I just had one comment about the stone patio. And obviously, this board will interpret what impermeable or permeable means. So I'm not, I, I know that you're going to think about that. I just wanted to be clear that the reason it wasn't included was not to be in any way deceptive. It's right on the plan. It isn't hidden. It just is not, in, you know, these professionals' opinion, something that would count as, as impermeable. So that's all I would say about that.
If you don't mind, I'd chime in on that issue, just for. If you don't mind, I'd chime in on that issue, just for future, for future planning purposes for both the board and applicants. I'll just give you my opinion. Structure is a very broad, so, okay, we, we can argue about whether or not it's impervious or not, right? I think if, you know, for all intents and purposes, it serves as a, as a, as an impervious structure. But the definition of structure, there's no definition of structure, I don't believe, in the bylaws.
Yeah, there is. Yes, there is.
So what, what's, maybe it's worth taking a minute to, to review what that says.
Yep, hold on.
I got it, David, it's any construction or any production or piece of work artificially built up, where composed of parts joined together in some definite manner, including but not limited to tents, reviewing stands, platforms, satellite TV antennas, tennis courts, stagings, towers, display signs, fences, and swimming pools, but not including those fences which terminate property lines.
Presumably, a house or a tool shed would be included in that definition, that's, they, you know, so, I mean, in, in, you know, virtually every other regulation I've, I've been, I've had to deal with from one side of this continent to the other, structures include, it's a very broad term, that includes dams and utility lines and roads and guardrails and everything, so regardless of whether or not the stone patio is impervious, it's hard to imagine it doesn't meet the definition of a structure, right? It's, it's displaced a natural component of the LPOD.
Just in terms, so.
The, the point is that it's manmade.
Just from my perspective, is the definition isn't, is it manmade or does it displace?
Which kind of patio?
Like you would see under the Wildlife Protection Act, where it's any disturbance of the jurisdictional area. I think a structure, I think, requires something to have been built. It says, it says artificially built up, composed of parts, joined together in some definite manner, and then it gives a whole bunch of examples, none of which I think is akin to a patio. But, you know, I, I hear this board is also going to consider whether it's permeable or impermeable, so I, I respectfully disagree on the structure because we have to look at the, at the bylaw definition.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, we can deliberate now. So at this point, the discussion is closed to the attendees here, and the board can deliberate. I guess, you know, if it's, what was it, Wayne, 14.7? You know, I certainly would have felt better about this if I, you know, saw those plantings. I think we should, Nancy asked at the last meeting about, you know, and Gary mentioned we could condition on not having a roof over the deck. Any thoughts about that? I guess I feel that would be important here, since there is no interest, no willingness to commit to, to doing plantings. I think we should definitely condition this on that there be no roof over the, over the deck.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, I, I totally agree with that idea, like, you know, do not this, let this become a conservatory or something like, you know, an enclosed, you know, structure.
Okay.
And I, I do believe we've counted patios before, so. I mean, this one is not an issue of some.
We don't, you know, the thing is, we don't really like my patio, there's like a concrete pad under that thing, how can you say that's not a structure and that's, you know, that's, you know, permeable? It's not.
They're not all like that either.
They're all different, so we don't, you know, we don't have the, the detail on this, and that's something we should, we should.
Yeah, I think in the future it'd be important, for sure, yeah. But I mean, in this particular case, it, it looks like we're, you know, just skin tight clothes, but it's, you know, it's under, so I think it's fine.
Yeah.
And the reality of it is, it's a 6 by 6 post in the ground, that much being disturbed, I, I just can't see where that's going to be a huge issue with runoff or anything, really.
Well, it's, you know, the deck and the stairs.
The structure that already drains to that spot now, so I can't see that being an issue.
I mean, I.
If anything, I think it might dis.
You know, I hear what you're saying, Wayne, I just, you know, the other thing is the tree, it's hard for me to see how that's not going to go, you know?
I said it wasn't, they're just going to cut it back.
That's what, yeah, people, you know, we know that one often, that the tree doesn't get cut.
That's their ability to keep that tree there.
Do you want to make that a condition?
What do you think, everybody?
Okay. All right, so, um, does anyone, I'd like to make a, a condition that there be no, no roof over the deck, and with that, does anybody want to make a motion on this?
Can I just have a?
The public hearing is closed, and I believe you know that.
I'm asking if I could make a procedural point.
Public hearing's closed, Alex.
I understand. I, I don't believe that condition is relevant to.
Alex, the public hearing is closed, and I'm going to ask you to respect the process here. Thank you. So where were we? Condition.
Condition for no roof.
Yeah.
No roof.
And no enclosure.
And no enclosure.
No enclosure. Would anyone like to make a, a motion to approve with a condition of no roof and no enclosure?
What else do, what else do we have the right condition? I mean, how far can we go with saying that in the future, I mean, the, any kind of roof structure and any kind of improvement to that area would need to be come back before us?
No, just if they wanted to enclose the deck.
They would have to come back before us. So we're assuming that they're going to do something. They say they're not going to do something. What else do we want to condition that we think they may do?
There's nothing in here that says that they're not going to, so I think it's, it's good to, to reinforce the idea.
They have to come back before us if they want to do something. That would be our opportunity to approve or disapprove.
I think we're reinforced, it's a good idea to reinforce. I asked town council about this after the last public hearing, you brought up that question, and she said it's definitely good where nothing's addressed, it's good to reinforce. So you don't have to vote for this, by the way.
Hey, no, I don't.
Yeah.
Trying to get the discussion around to where we're not assuming they're going to do something that they're not supposed to. I mean, their intention is to have the porch, the deck, and that's all they say they're going to do. I just wonder what else we should condition. If we're going to condition something like this, what else should we condition? Is there further things there that we should be aware of?
On this application?
Yeah.
I don't see anything else. I mean, do you?
If they did something to it, they'd have to come back for a permit. So this, this approves a deck, is that correct?
Right.
That's all it approves. If they want a roof or sides or something, they have to come back for another permit.
That's true, but it doesn't always happen.
Right.
Right.
Being in a, in a business where I see houses, it doesn't always happen, there aren't permits for everything we sell.
We've seen many instances around the lake where this happens, where somebody's.
Not just the lake.
Yeah, everywhere, yeah. So I make a motion that we approve the request for 17 Mackinac terraces with a condition for the deck, with a condition that there will be no roof or an enclosure. Do I have a second?
Further discussion? If we're assuming that they're going to potentially do a roof or whatever they're going to, what we've want to condition, aren't they going to do it anyway? So we, we condition it, that's fine.
But then we can enforce.
But we can enforce anyway. We can enforce anyway. I just don't like that we always have to add on to what's already here. We already have a rule, we already have a, a rule in place that covers what we're doing, and we always, and we want to include erosion control for a 6 by 6 post. That's the kind of stuff I just don't think is pertinent or relevant to what the actual project is.
Any other discussion?
No, but I'll, I'll second your motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the request for a deck with a condition of no roof and no enclosure. We have a second from Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
I would say I will vote for it so they get a deck, but I don't, I don't like the add-on, but I will not vote it down so they can't even have their deck. So I will vote for this, but I don't think it's in our purview to say, to add that condition. But I don't want to turn down their deck. I just need to have that, I just need to put that in there.
My vote would be prefaced the very same way. I don't want these people to be denied. It's a very simple project, and we make it complicated somehow.
We just need five, Wayne, we just need five, so if you don't want to vote, you don't have.
What I can, I know what my responsibilities are. I think you understand where I'm coming from.
Oh, I do. Always.
That's good.
Okay.
Appreciate the time.
Yep, thanks, thank you.
What's the vote?
It was, you know.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if there was a voting. Thank you very much. Thanks all for your time.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thanks to yours.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, you too. Is it Thanksgiving?
Enjoy your deck. Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so what do we have next? We have, thanks, David. We have a sign request from Jed, is Jed here? No, Jed.
No, Jed.
Oh, okay. All right, so Destiny, come on up, introduce yourselves, welcome.
Oh, yeah.
Of course. This is Destiny and Destiny Mitchell and Antonio.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Over in the chair.
Yeah, thank you for your patience, that went a little longer than I thought it would.
Okay, so, hi, I'm Antonio, this is my wife, Destiny. We moved into 26 Main Street about two, something like that, and what, she has a business in Pittfield, she does psychic readings and stuff like that. And so what we have, because we're right there on the main street, there's a lot of foot traffic, so we would like just to have some kind of advertisement, just so people to know that she's there, not to run any business there because it is our home, but just for someone to see, just to have the advertisement there. And so basically, there's a post already there right in front of the house, stands around like five foot tall, and sticks out around two and a half feet, and it already has the address, and it has like the little eye screws, so I was thinking if we can just add on just a little sign that says her business on there and approach her number. Yeah, to hang right underneath.
Her address is already on.
Yeah, I made like a little diagram, but I gave it to you guys, I think I see it right there.
Yep, we have it.
I'm not an artist, so I mean, it's the best I could do, actually, yeah.
Yes.
Like the post that's already there, it's already there, and the little dinner sign is already there, it just has the address, so we're just trying to add the two foot by two foot, it'll actually be, now that I measured it one more time, the main sign that started there is already a little longer, so it'd kind of be a little bit smaller than what it looks like on that paper. It's right next to, right here, the red line, and then the intersection, then.
Oh, okay.
The house right here, and then one more.
Yeah, you're right on the corner.
The old Charlotte.
Right by the, at Dallas.
Yeah.
Yeah, Judy is, um. She had a very little house next to it.
You still be pearls.
Yes.
I don't know, we just moved in there, but now it's, it's a nice house, I mean, it's beautiful, we love it, and we love the town, it's so, I mean, it's beautiful. So, and there's so much foot traffic during the October months and this holding, it kind of slowed down with all the weather being so cold, but it's still there, and we would just like to have some kind of advertisement there, just to help promote our business.
Are there dimensions here?
Yeah, so just, this is Destiny and Antonio, they are living in the RC district, and this is a sign for, it's four square feet, and it meets the requirements, so, yep.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Do we need to talk about it?
We just approve it. I make a motion that we approve your request for a sign. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, I so much.
Thank you.
I'm a little nervous for that, I'm like, I have a whole bunch of like measurements, like how far it is from the sidewalk, how far it is from the roof, how. Awesome, thank you guys so much. Is there anything we have to sign or do?
Uh, Jennifer, did they need to?
You already signed yours.
Awesome, thank you so much, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck. Good luck to you, I hope you.
Well, I appreciate it.
Good night.
All right.
Right now. Is this, the township one is?
No, this is a.
No, no, the, I'm saying where.
Oh, Jed isn't here?
Oh.
Yeah. All right.
What was that, what was that?
He sent in a new application.
He did.
Country curtains just.
He already came to us.
Yeah, but he, he needed to do more stuff.
Okay. Everybody ready for Thanksgiving?
Yes.
That's it? Okay.
All right.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yay!